Evening, I'd like to call to order the school board meeting of March 23rd, 2021. This evening, I have the invocation and pledge. I want to share a letter that Stacy VanderWijde in elementary education shared with all of us. It's about a former student and an SCPS teacher who made a difference. I received a phone call yesterday from a former student, Olivia, who attended Spring Lake Elementary. She's a high school senior now and lives in Oregon. She was reaching out to get an email for her third grade teacher, Ms. Jennifer Corcoran. She explained how much that teacher had helped her with reading, and she wanted to let her know she was going to college and she wanted to thank her. Olivia was determined, so she reached out to the school, but they did not have an employee by that name. So she called Elementary Ed. It took some research, but she found out that the teacher was teaching at Lake Mary Elementary and had a new last name, Ms. Jennifer Thackeray, because she had married. Dr. Singleton, AP at Lake Mary, confirmed she was one in the same as the student remembered, and when Singleton spoke to the teacher, she remembered Olivia and could not believe she was a senior. Mrs. Thackeray was filled with joy and happy tears, so she wanted to share her phone number with Olivia so they could connect. When I called Olivia and told her I found her third grade teacher, she started crying and was so thankful. Mrs. Thackeray made a lasting impression on that student. I emailed Mrs. Thackeray and thanked her for this tremendous impact she had made on this once little girl who will now make a difference in this world because of the time she took as a teacher to help her succeed as a student. You never know what a difference you are making, so keep trying one student at a time. This story has warmed my heart and brought some joy to a former student, a teacher, AP, and this executive assistant. I hope it warms your heart as well. Needless to say, we have all shed some happy tears to be able to reconnect this student and teacher. Stacy, thank you for sharing that. Please stand and join me in the pledge. Thank you. Let the record reflect that all school board members, superintendents, school board attorney and clerk are present this evening. Board members, roll call order for this evening. Member Sanchez, Member Kraus, Vice Chair Pennock, Member Calderon, and then myself. Thank you. Ms. Merriman, do you have any groups wishing to be acknowledged? Thank you. Superintendent, do you have any agenda modifications?
Just one, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any agenda modifications? Member Sanchez?
No modifications, thank you.
Thank you. Member Kraus?
No modifications, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pennock?
I would like to pull letter G for some clarifying questions, please.
Thank you. Member Calderon?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I do not have any. Board members, is there a motion to approve the agenda outline?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Griffin?
Have some recognitions.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin, members of the board. I'm pleased to announce our SCPS Veteran of the Month. Mr. Diaz was born in San Juan, Puerto Rico, and graduated high school in 1988 from the American Military Academy. Upon graduation, he enlisted in the United States Navy and performed boot camp at the Navy Recruit Training Center in San Diego, California. After boot camp, he became a naval hospital corpsman and completed the Advanced Field Medical Service School. Subsequently, he was assigned to the 1st Battalion 6th Marine Infantry Regiment from the 2nd Marine Division. The next four years allowed him the opportunity to travel the world and serve his country. Mr. Diaz was part of numerous combat operations, which included, but not limited to, Operation Just Cause in Panama and Operation Desert Shield Desert Storm in the Middle East. His enlistment ended in 1992, and he had achieved the rank of Petty Officer 3rd Class and was awarded the Combat Action Ribbon and Kuwait Liberation Medal with four Bronze Stars. After his enlistment ended in 1992, Mr. Diaz proceeded to further his education at Florida State University. He earned his Bachelor's of Science degree in Business Administration with a concentration in hospitality management. Upon graduating from Florida State, and in his words, "the best university in the world", he became a law enforcement officer at the Orlando Police Department. During his tenure at OPD, he had the opportunity to work in the Patrol Services Bureau and Neighborhood Patrol Unit. He retired as a police officer 1st Class and was awarded the Purple Heart Medal and Award of Valor. In 2014, Mr. Diaz joined the SCPS family as a clinic assistant at Lake How High School. He is forever grateful in having this experience. The opportunity that he had to interact with and guide our youth has been priceless. During his time in the military and the Orlando Police Department, Mr. Diaz has gone into harm's way and has been a witness to courage under fire. In speaking with Mr. Diaz, he says the work performed by our hero SCPS teachers and administrators is no different, that every day, these brave men and women courageously educate our children. They certainly do not do it for the recognition and treasure, but for the love of their fellow man and woman. He concluded by stating, "He has certainly been blessed to work in the shadow of these giants." Mr. Diaz, we have been blessed to have you as an employee of Seminole County Public Schools. Thank you for your service to our nation and our district. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to present the SCPS Veteran of the Month, Mr.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, I'm here to recognize an outstanding student, Esther Destiny Ukachuwu, from Seminole High School. Destiny is part of the foundation's Take Stock in Children program. Her mentor is Monica Tipperini. Destiny recently received two very prestigious awards. The first is that she is one of six statewide leaders for life. She will receive funds for housing, meal plans, books, school supplies, as well as a MacBook Pro. The second recognition she received is that she'll be a QuestBridge scholar. QuestBridge is a college match and scholarship program that helps outstanding low-income high school students be matched with a university and receive a scholarship. Through QuestBridge, she was matched with Vanderbilt University and will receive a full four-year scholarship, which is valued at over $200,000. Destiny wowed the committee with her impressive academic record of 4.6 GPA and class rank of 37 out of over 1,000 graduates at Seminole High School, but it was her essay that really made her stand out. Destiny moved to Florida from Nigeria at the age of six. Her mother left the country with Destiny and her sisters to escape an abusive environment and a community with poor healthcare. Destiny saw firsthand the importance of access to standardized quality healthcare that saved her mother's life. This experience inspired her goal to become a neonatologist and open health clinics in sub-Saharan Africa. Destiny is an amazing young woman who has acquired more than 350 hours of community service while participating in marching band, Science National Honor Society, and serving as president of the multicultural club. Congratulations, Destiny.
Good evening, Chair Allman, board members, and Superintendent Griffin. It is with great pleasure I introduce you Richard Miles as the recipient of the 2021 Fame stands for Food Service Achievement, Management, and Excellence. For more than 30 years, Fame Awards have recognized outstanding heroes in K-12 food service and school nutrition professionals who raise industry standards by tackling challenges and making a difference within their school district and community. When face-to-face -- oh, that's so cute. When face-to-face learning came to a halt in March of 2020, we were faced with a difficult challenge of how we are going to continue to provide our freshly-prepared, high-quality meals to our guests. Well, Richard and the team quickly established multiple drive-through locations across the district, featuring nutritious and delicious meals that went beyond the minimum standards because this was a time when our guests needed more. Our courageous team prepared and safely served thousands of meals with a smile the first day, and the number continued to grow as the word got out. Even today, we are still serving our remote learners through our drive-through locations. Richard has been part of the SCPS Red Apple Dining Team for more than 10 years, constantly striving to exceed expectations and fulfill our mission to nourish and enrich the lives of guests through an exceptional dining experience. Thank you, Richard, for nurturing and enriching my life, the lives of our team, and our guests. Thank you. And he is joined by his wife, Michelle, and Condoleezza, and Martin, and I don't see William. Oh, there he is, and William![762.61][762.61](Applause)
Well, that's a tough act to follow. Look at those little ones dressed as -- they're so cute. So it gives me great pleasure, board members, Dr. Griffin, to introduce our new medical health coordinator, Julie Bocock. Julie got a diploma, received her diploma in nursing in 1981 from St. Luke School of Nursing in Duluth, Minnesota. Her bachelor's degree in nursing in 1993 from the College of St. Scholastica in Duluth, Minnesota, and a master's degree in education from Hamlin University in St. Paul, Minnesota. She's also worked in various areas of nursing during her 39 years of service, including hospitals, clinics, public health settings, and was in the military for 15 years as an officer in the Naval Reserve Nurse Corps. Her most recent experience is 17 years in nursing and education in a school setting, and the last nine of those years, she was the coordinator of health services in a large school district in Minnesota. She looks forward to working with all of us, and we look forward to working with her. She comes here with her little six-year-old granddaughter moved down here, and she had to move to Oviedo to be with her. With her also, recognizing her is her immediate supervisor, Amy Elwood, Director of Intervention Services.
Good evening, everybody. I have the pleasure this evening of introducing two employees. First is Dawn Botts, who will be the Director of Employee and Government Relations and Personnel Dawn has a bachelor's degree in elementary ed from Trinity International University, a master's in ed technology from Nova Southeastern University, and a master's in ed leadership from Barry University. She taught in St. John's County for nine years before coming to Seminole County. During her tenure in Seminole, she has served as the Human Resource Coordinator and Equity Administrator from 2015 through 17, and the Director of Employee Benefits from 2017 through 2021. Next, I have the honor of introducing Mr. Mark Russi, who will be the Executive Director of HR and Professional Standards. Mark began his teaching career in 1990 at Lakeview Middle School, and in 1996 became the Dean of Students at Lakeview. In 1997, he became the Assistant Principal at Jackson Heights Middle School, and in 2002 transferred to Sanford Middle School. In 2005, he was appointed Principal of Sanford Middle School, and in 2014, he transferred to the district office as the Director of Employee and Governmental Relations and Personnel Services. Family members in attendance, Cheryl Russell.
School board members and Dr. Griffin, I have the pleasure of announcing our new incoming Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Bob started his career during high school when he was nominated by one of his teachers to be an intern at his school district in New Jersey to help network the schools and fix computers over the summer break. Bob then moved to central Florida in 1999 to work in web development for a company during the dot-com boom. He has worked for the school district for 12 years now. While working at the district, Bob completed his Bachelor's in Information Technology summa cum laude in 2017 at Seminole State College, and he's currently working on his Master's in Educational Leadership at UCF. He's joined tonight by his wife, Jennifer, who is a teacher at Crystal Lake Elementary School, his children Lily and Lex, who are both students at Crystal Lake, and not in attendance with him tonight is his new puppy, Ace the Bad Hound.[1060.01][1060.01](Laughter, applause)
Dr. Griffin and board members, it's my privilege tonight to introduce the new Executive Director of Secondary Education for high schools, Mr. Nineteen years ago, he began his career as a high school music educator, teaching band to students at Oviedo High School, before moving to Hagerty High School to start the band program when the doors initially opened in 2005. In 2009, he made the transition into educational leadership as Dean of Students and later Assistant Principal at Lake Mary and Seminole High School. In 2016, he was given the opportunity to lead the Greyhounds of Lyman High School as the proud principal. Living in the Lyman community and getting to know the incredible student, staff, and families of this great school has been the pinnacle of his career and one that he will never forget. In Mike's words, "It gives me great honor to take the next step in my leadership journey by expanding my horizons and leading the outstanding high schools in Seminole County."
Vice Chair Pennock, if you would read -- we have a public comment. If you'd read the statement, please.
The public input segment of this meeting is provided for the purpose of permitting persons to present specific matters to the board for its consideration and action or referral to the superintendent and his staff. Public input segment of this meeting is not open to presentation of campaign issues by political candidates, matters involving student disciplinary action, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. Each individual member of the public is limited to three minutes. A designated group representative may have up to six minutes.
Thank you. Nadia Gordon, Michael Johnson, and then Joyce Stricker, please. And please introduce yourself before you speak.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Nadia Gordon. I'm currently a senior at Croons Academy, and the problem I want to be brought up is the Croons graduation decision. So on March 4th, I was notified on Facebook that SCPS uploaded a video regarding the graduation plans for all students in the county. Dr. Walt Griffin quoted in his video, "UCF has cleared their football field for our youth for the class of 2021." When I heard this statement, I was overwhelmed with emotions because with everything going on right now, I was happy to say that more than six people were able to join me and watch one of my greatest achievements. That happened to suddenly change when I was informed by Dr. Brandon Handshaw himself that everyone except for Croons will be graduating at the UCF arena. I was furious and I was angry because at this point, it was unfair and it was heartbreaking. We may have a small class, but for the past four years of being in high school, I have built bonds with not only the students, but the faculty, and we're like family. So for them to break this family apart into two ceremonies, it is selfish and it is uncalled for. It is crazy to hear that everyone else gets to invite their family to a field that sits over 40,000 people, and it is ironic to hear that Croons suddenly wants to think about safety and have precautions, but send their students to different counties to play in sports events and be exposed to this virus. But with the decision that Croons has made, it is now making me choose between a great-grandmother, grandparents, uncles and aunts, and cousins that have been by my side through this long journey. If the decision is based off of financial trouble, we should be given a proper explanation and not given lousy excuses. Even if we hold our graduation at Seminole High School field, it will make a difference, believe it or not. This is my last chance to make memories with my fellow classmates, and for everyone else to do so is unbelievable. I'm asking you now, Seminole County Board members, if you have the power to change this decision, please do so, and please do so now. Because the consequences that we are facing is because of the lack of communication. And at the end of the day, we may be a magnet school, but we still are youth under the Seminole County Public Schools, and we should be treated equally like everyone else. Thank you.
My name is Mike Johnson. I live in the unincorporated area of Seminole County. I am here to inform you of HB 241, it's a House bill up in Tallahassee, that gives parents rights that have been taken away by this school board and this legal council who has been chosen as your new superintendent under threats based on racism. It's very sad and a shame that we have to go to Tallahassee to pass new laws to protect ourselves from school boards and bureaucrats that they appoint to protect our children. This is what the law right here, folks. We warn about the teaching in cults from the Middle East that convert our young to killing in the name of Islam, and then you call them insane. We have been ignored. You violated your charter and changed your decision in choosing another civil servant in this room here. I contacted a contracted person who has been giving you bad advice every time I've come up to this meeting here to make comments here. She has bullied you and the parents who come before this elected board. That's going to be our new supervisor that goes through. A couple of you even complained to me about how this place operated when I met you in the food stores, and you know who you are up there. This House bill is designed to protect our children from abuse by this school system. Too many bad choices are being made by local elected persons. This bill will help us take back this corrupt system, and I hope you listen to my stern words, your neighbors. Thank you very much.[1498.45][1498.45](Applause)
My name is Joyce Stricker. I live in Sweetwater Oaks. March 9th was the first school board meeting I have attended in the 13 years that I have been a Seminole County Schools parent. I am here today for the second time this month to ask the board to do what I think is best for all children and all communities, and not just my children and my community. If Seminole County becomes a Mecca for progressive learning agendas, you will lose your conservative tax base, and the Seminole County school system will fail as the result of inadequate funding. Your seats might be higher than mine in this hall of hypocrisy, but it's my property taxes that pay your salaries. Therefore, you must make your decision tonight based on what the majority of your constituents is asking for. We are asking for a third party to help with a new search to find a superintendent with an educational background. This new search will be a means to restore integrity to a process that has been tainted by favoritism, racism, and the exertion of undue influence by some members of the Sanford Community upon this board. The famous words of Billy Joel, "We didn't start the fire." The school board now has the responsibility before it to extinguish this fire by voting no on approving Ms. Beaman's superintendent contract.
Barbara Martin, Carla Johns, and Michelle Burrows, please. Barbara Martin?
Good evening. My name is Carla Johns. I am a mom of five from Hernando County. I had a few parents reach out to me on Facebook in regards to the mask issue within this district, and apparently they don't like to public speak. I have been fighting it in my district since August 25th of 2020. I also have a special needs child where even wearing these causes major sensory problems. The parents are asking for a mask choice. There have been situations with the bacterial pneumonia from wearing the mask for long periods of times. There has also been MRSA that children have contracted by wearing the mask for eight, nine hours a day, despite the fact of being washed daily, so forth and so on. The parents who have contacted me are asking respectfully to consider for the 2122 school year to remove the mask. Also was brought to the attention that parents are really fed up with this and are wanting to pull the Gardner scholarships, as well as the McKay scholarships, in homeschooling for the following school year if this is not considered. Thank you so much for your time.
Michelle Burrows, and then Anne Stanky, and Kelly Shilson.
I made copies. So, sorry. I get emotional when I'm mad. My name is Michelle Burrows. I am a parent of four children who have gone to school through this district, one of which was a graduate of Oviedo High School last year, where his entire last two months of school was ripped out from underneath him and his peers due to this virus. I am one of many parents in this district that are very fed up with these masks. Students have shown, the studies have shown, that the kids of these ages are not the contractors and spreaders of this disease. Do you all not understand what effects this mask mandate is doing to our youth? We are causing psychological and emotional destruction to these children by masking them, separating them, keeping them home, and not allowing them to do any of the things that our normal kids in grade school are supposed to do. Growing these children up to not understand the subtleties of facial expression and to make them be fearful of people who do not have a mask on, when they should be fearful of the people who do wear a mask. of the people who do wear a mask on that might harm them or kidnap them. It is a crime against humanity and an assault on our children. The mask mandates in this school system need to stop. Everyone should have a choice. Long-term mask wearing has never been studied. These children are being shamed, bullied, and ostracized if they have a hard time wearing them. Masks come with health risks that has been studied, and then if you put them on developing children for over 30 hours a week, it's just insanity. There needs to be a mask choice. If we are going by science, the studies prove not to only asymptomatic spread nonexistent, but children are not carriers. Masks will physically do more harm than good by blocking oxygen to these children's developing brains. Not to mention the breathing in of unclean masks can cause bacterial pneumonia, infections of their mouths, bloody noses. Our children are physically, mentally, and emotionally struggling. Have you looked at all the increase in mental health and suicide cases that we've had in the state of Florida, let alone the US? My children have suffered with acne, depression. One of my children is getting nosebleeds and severe allergies, and another one has asthma and has a hard time taking deep breaths. Masks create bacteria reproduction grounds, especially with kids who don't follow proper mask protocol, let alone the adults that I've seen, and create cross-contamination. You do know that masks worn properly are to be changed every two hours at least, right? Kids touch their faces more so with masks than without. At recess, they put them in a pile on the ground with all the other students. That's cross-contamination right there. How about you teach the kids how to properly wash their hands, cough, sneeze, and wipe down their desks and belongings? It should be up to the parents how they want protection for their child, and forcing something that is less proven more harm than good, forcing children to conform instead of proper healthcare like washing their hands, is lazy and harmful and abuse to them. There are no mandates in the state of Florida.
Please wrap up your comment.
The states without mask mandates and lockdowns have done substantially better than the states who have implemented them. These kids go through enough in the past 365 days. Give them back their public school rights and freedoms. What I handed you guys today...
Thank you.
Is a survey that I...
In order.
The southern border is open with kids coming up not having...
Deputies.
...the whole side of the school system shut down. It is wrong.
Ma'am.
I'm sorry, but it is wrong.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Shilson. I'm a resident of Seminole County. Part of my speech, but I totally agree with what just happened. I am requesting that the school board have a third-party assistant looking for a new superintendent. You have placed a cloud of doubt over the veracity and legitimacy of your second decision, and it may have violated Robert's rules. In addition, there appear to be improprieties that may have occurred. The Seminole County community posted over 1,000 Facebook posts online regarding your decision to rescind your original offer with no basis, and then offered to another candidate that has no classroom or teaching experience. One would have to ask why Seminole County School Board believes an attorney would be a better candidate over an educator. You have successfully divided a county in which there was no division prior to this deed. Perhaps this was the intent. Congratulations.
Thank you. Kelly Shilson, and then Anne Stanky. Kelly?
No, that was me, sorry.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Anne?
Thank you. I'm Anne Stanky, and I appreciate you hearing my voice. I too am speaking about the superintendent posting and frankly, the mess that's been made. The opportunity to hire a qualified superintendent for a school district has become an example of what not to do in school districts in Florida and across our country. This is something I never thought I would see in our county. So how did we get here? Simply by certain members of this board not listening to us. On the Seminole County Public Schools website, there's an organizational chart, and at the top are students and citizens of Seminole County. Underneath that is the school board. This means you work for us on our behalf and with our voices and desires to be the driving force of your direction and decisions. To that end, a superintendent search key stakeholder view survey was conducted dated September 29th on behalf of the school board. It's on the website. That survey contained four primary questions, the third of which was, "What skills and capabilities would you consider important for the new superintendent to have in driving our top priorities?" In that summary of findings, after agreeing that Dr. Griffin has big shoes to fill, was a response that your students and citizens of Seminole County wanted an educator first and administrator second. Did you hear that? They wanted an educator first and administrator second. In fact, a background in education is not even listed within the job description or qualifications for the position of superintendent for Seminole County. How can this be? How can it not be a qualification? Three of you initially voted for candidate with relevant educational background. You listened to the community at large, but then one rescinded. Why did that rescension happen? Why did the board rescind a legitimate offer, then turn around and vote for Sarita Beaman? Positions as this should never be awarded because individuals or groups believe they deserve it, are owed it, or because decision-makers feel like they are armed or threatened. Excuse me, strong-armed or threatened. So, now what are we going to do? The three board members that have got us to this mess, how are you going to mend the distrust, the anger, and disappointment you've settled in our county? You have not listened to us. You've not listened to students and the citizens of Seminole County. And you have set Sarita Beaman up for failure. If not for failure, she's sure starting at a severely disadvantaged position. How do you expect the teachers and school-level administrators to relate and respect to a superintendent who has never walked in their shoes? Sarita Beaman does not understand what they go through day in and day out at the school level. An occasional trip or meeting at a school in the capacity as legal counsel does not give you that knowledge. So tonight, you will award Sarita Beaman with a contract with a lucrative salary, knowing that you have not served or listened to the majority of the students and citizens of Seminole County. This is not why you're elected.
Anne, please wrap up your comment. Your time is up.
Just last comment.
Thank you.
Please give Croomes Academy their graduation.
Kenneth Bentley, Henrietta Pistor, and Dan Smith.
Good evening again, board members and superintendent. I won't need three minutes tonight. Goldsboro Front Porch and the Barbershop Podcast had three requests the last time I was here. One request was that we supported Ms. Beaman to be the superintendent. After the night, when we leave, I hope our new name is Superintendent Beaman. Also, I'm gonna look at you, Mr. Godgrove, and I hope Mr. Rice is still here. High school, we want Black History or African-American Studies. I know you leave on June 30th, but work on that for me. We've been together a long time. Miss Faison, I'm not letting you off the hook. Middle schools, African-American Studies or Black History, we want it. Mandatory, not elected. Also, board members, please do not wait until Ingrid Burden Nathan is deceased or can't walk. Let's name something her honor while she can appreciate it. Once again, in 1964, Ms. Burden Nathan integrated Sanford Middle School. The hardship that she suffered, the way she was treated, we can never repay her, but her name should be on a facility or school in Seminole County. I don't need three minutes. Thank you. Superintendent Beaman will be walking out the door tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Ingrid Pastore, and I live in Longwood. I have four children. I have two that graduated already through Lake Brantley, and then I have a tick and Lake Brantley, kids still in school. I'm here about this superintendent position. I really am surprised about what happened. I feel shocked what happened, and I feel that I do not want to be part of something like that. And I think there's lots of people that are with us that feel that the way that things have been handled is totally wrong. That's also not the example that I want to set for my children. Further on, I want to continue to ask that you, this is a great school, a school district with amazing academics, amazing sports, arts. It's an amazing district. Why are we not looking for a national person with the correct qualifications in teaching, education, and all these things necessary? We definitely need that to continue from where we are on to the next level. We cannot go down here. And further on, I want to ask you all to please get a third-party person, an independent person, in and redo this whole thing. We are being, what is the word now? Divided as a county where we are now. We have to fix this, and I think the only way to fix it is to get a third-party person in and restart this whole process. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anne Smith, and Michael Skubiak, and Brittany Walker.
Good evening. My name is Dan Smith. I am a resident of Seminole County, and I'm employed by Seminole County Public Schools. Classroom teacher since 2003. I just wanted to put my comments in and just tell you I've been watching the tough task that you guys have had. It's often difficult for people who don't really understand school systems to have an idea of what the school board does, but we trust you with certain decisions. And it's very important that that trust maintain. Seminole County Public Schools is the largest employer in Seminole County, and we have a large population of children. Mistakes were made, certainly, and that's very unfortunate. But as a body, you guys have an obligation to serve the 60,000 or so students of Seminole County and put aside any other differences. I understand the parents are very important, and it does make a difference. But our procedures, we don't ask for a show of hands. We have policies that go, and we ask you guys to do what's best for the students. I mean, sometimes it's nice when you're reading and everything. We see that, it looks good. But I don't think people realize what you guys have to go through whenever there's a rezoning, whenever there's discipline hearings, whenever there is even something a matter of graduation or something like that. These things are churning on you and pushing on you. It's a very difficult thing to do, and I admire what you guys were able to do. Right now, unfortunately, with the superintendent situation, it sounds like a good idea to realize our mistakes and scuttle them, but we don't want to put you in a situation where you would now have to rescind your offer to Sarita Beaman, because now Seminole would be the district that has offered the position twice and rescinded it twice. So if you do another search, I think I might be the best candidate, and I'm not going to apply. So, I can assure you, Seminole does not want that type of pool in there. You won't be able to get a good pool there for at least four or five years. But we trust you, and we want to have the confidence and faith with you, so please just go forward and do what you're supposed to do. And thank you very much.
My name is Michael Skubiak. I used to come to school board meetings all the time. Many of you are my friends up there. Anyway, I decided to come to the school board meeting again because of what I read in the paper about your selection of the superintendent. It sounds like you're using something other than a qualification to be the best leader, and that disturbs me greatly. So I think the key to a good life is education, and it leads to a good, full life. Excuse me, I gotta hang up on it. Somebody... Somebody's trying to sell me car insurance, I'm sure. Anyway, behavior is affected by education. I really was lucky. I grew up in a mixed neighborhood. I have two black grandchildren. I don't have a racist bone in my body. Fortunately, I worked for Bell Telford Laboratories where we had two patents a month, two patents a week. We had seven Nobel Prize winners, and we always rated everybody on their qualifications, never on race. And I'm just, I think the best thing in the world if we just stopped talking about race and judge people on their quality of... Also, I don't think the school system teaches enough about skepticism. I looked through your textbooks, and I think some of your textbooks are absolutely awful, full of lies. You've got to check your textbooks much more carefully. I can give you examples if you want. I think what you also should start teaching is empathy, how to treat others. I think that success for a good civilization is treat others like you want to be treated, and also have empathy for people in sad conditions. We should help others and be a skeptic. Let me give you an example of that. I have a Muslim friend, this has nothing to do with religion, who believes Adam was 80, 90 feet tall. He does not understand if with science, we know that as our height goes up, our weight triples with height. Okay? Goes up by a cube factor. I cannot believe it. Hey, it goes up by a cube factor. So if you're 90 feet tall, you weigh over 600,000 pounds. You know your bones go up by a factor of square, so your bones would not support a 600,000. So no one can ever be 90 foot tall, not a human being. That is just nonsense. Why don't we teach skepticism so people don't believe nonsense? People believe so many things that aren't true. It's very disturbing to me, at least. People turn down the fact that we are all here by evolution and not by creation, and I know that we're going to offend some people religiously, but we've got to start teaching science. I'm disappointed in the school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Walker. Earlier this month, I filed a lawsuit against this school board for their handling of the superintendent selection process. This board shocked the entire community when they voted to rescind Chad Farnsworth as the next superintendent in early March, defaming his character and electing a woman with no experience or degree in education to the position of superintendent strictly because of her race. You all just introduced a new administrator tonight that will now have to report to a superintendent who is severely less qualified than she is in education. I'd also like to ask, where is Sarita Beaman tonight? This school board has created a racial divide so deep in this community that it will take months or years to heal and recover from. Seminole County has been home to me my entire life, and I will not sit back and allow racial politics to destroy my hometown. The community is asking the board to start from scratch with the vetting process using a third-party company. Find new qualified candidates. Keep the politics out of our school system. Make decisions that are not purely racially motivated, and put our children's education first. There is a room full of infuriated parents here tonight, and we are demanding that you hear our voices and listen to our community. If you do not, we will vote you out of your school board seats faster than you can blink your eyes, and I will make sure of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Beasley, Barbara Martin, and Julia Roberts.
I'm sorry.
Good evening.
I didn't even hear you call my name, honestly. I'm not actually supposed to be here. I'm at Disney World on spring break right now, so ignore me. I wanted to take a few minutes. I'm going to try to move past the whole who you've selected as the superintendent, but I do think that in light of everything that's gone on, first of all, the only criticism I've ever had for you, Dr. Griffin, in the entire time that I've known you, is that you shouldn't have participated in the selection process. You had the opportunity to get to know Sarita Beaman and work with her for many, many years. She probably kept your bacon out of the fire on more than one occasion. You didn't have that same opportunity with Chad Farnsworth, and so the playing field was never balanced. So your opinion just takes away from the whole premise that all these decisions were based on. Moving forward, one of the things that has become crystal clear, I'm the parent of a Croomes graduation student from 2020. I would ask that you do honor her request and revisit the whole graduation thing. But one of the things that I think really needs to be addressed here is the countless parents and faculty members that have come forward and felt threatened if they lent their voice in a way that was contrary to what the public opinion of the school district was. Parents, my daughter is now homeschooled, and now I'm reexamining the optics of whether I was encouraged to homeschool her because her disabilities were... All that anybody ever saw from him was his test scores and his highly giftedness, and he's almost flunking out of college because of it right now. And I am ashamed of what happened and how many 504 meetings I sat in and got no support and no help. I would ask, I thought I was an island unto myself, but now I'm hearing all these parents and all these teachers. A parent reaches out to me and tells me that their child is addicted to drugs because they go to Hagerty and through middle school and through high school. They're ADHD, their anxiety and everything is not being addressed in an educational format. They're just being handed pharmaceuticals. What does that say about our district? I don't care what you do at this point in your selection of a superintendent. What I care is that you investigate how much fact is in this and that you fix it. If that means that we don't have the property values and we don't have the high-rated school district that we are supposed to have, if that means that all the things that have been swept under the rug are pulled out into the open, examined, and fixed, then so be it. Let us take the hit and move forward the right way so that all our students are served and all of our teachers are respected.
Thank you, Barbara.
My name is Julia Roberts. I spoke with Dr. Walsh several months ago regarding my concerns for the mask mandates. The key takeaways from our conversations were, one, because she did not see a lot of parents voicing their concerns for mandates. She did not think there were enough of us concerned parents to warrant further review of the indefinite mandate. And two, she said that the board was making decisions regarding COVID-19 in school policies based on direction received by an advisory board vetted by Dr. Griffin. I asked if the board was balanced, were there experts that did not hold a mask mandate position? The answer was no. Was no one able to find the experts that could challenge the mandate, bias, or were you unwilling to look? Last week, Governor DeSantis held a roundtable with public health experts who all denounced the policy of forcing masks and social distancing on children. If he could find the experts with the relevant data that adamantly oppose these measures, why couldn't you? One expert on the panel, Dr. Scott Alice, was even on the White House Coronavirus Task Force. He relied on important data and his experience to challenge the group's think. He proposed that face masks and social distancing were not effective in slowing the spread of the coronavirus. He knew what hundreds of thousands of doctors around the world knew, but he had the courage to say it, and he was punished for it. We see that same punitive behavior locally. I believe more than one of you have publicly recognized that teachers fear speaking out with their concerns. They fear retribution and retaliation if they dare speak out against the religion of mandates and distancing. Another of the panel experts, Dr. Jeri Bachara, a professor of medicine at Stanford University, said in his paper titled "A Sensible and Compassional Anti-COVID Strategy," quote, "In effect, what we've been doing is requiring young people to bear the burden of controlling a disease from which they face little to no risk. This is entirely backward from the right approach." End quote. In the very few comments I've heard at these meetings in support of mask mandates, I have heard the mantra "Follow the Science," but have yet to hear these science advocates provide any literature to support their position for mandates. "Follow the Science" has become a hollow slogan that only has public agreement because of its tireless repetition. Has anyone who chants "Follow the Science" actually read the science? Let's go ahead and follow the science. Number one, a study in Oxford Academic Anals of Work Exposure and Health that evaluated the filtration performance of cloth masks showed that they had 40% to 90% instantaneous penetration levels. Quote, "A poor filtration performance is expected for improvised fabric materials because these materials are not designed for respiratory protection." Not only are masks ineffective, end quote, sorry, not only are masks ineffective, they are harmful. The World Health Organization article advised on the use of masks in the community setting of influenza A outbreaks. Quote, "Using a mask incorrectly may actually increase the risk of transmission rather than reduce it." Number two, the CDC, quote, "Available evidence shows that cloth masks may even increase the risk of infection due to moisture, liquid diffusion, and retention of the virus. Penetration of particles through cloth is reported to be high. Altogether, common fabric cloth masks are not considered protective against respiratory viruses, and their use should not be encouraged." Three, face masks restrict the elimination of virus recirculating the virus into the nasal, sinus, and upper respiratory passages. This is just a small sample of literature that proves that wearing masks for the general public is not evidence-based. I implore you, share the evidence-based justifications for your indefinite mandates. Make it a point to balance the COVID advisory board. If DeSantis can find the medical experts that can substantially challenge the wisdom of the mandates, then so can you.
Please wrap up your comments.
Last sentence. Do not hide behind the tired rhetoric of "Follow the Science" or hide behind other government agencies you claim to blindly follow. You owe it to the children, and you are bound to serve to unmask the research you are using to make policies that affect their present and their futures. Thank you.
Marcy Hickman, Velma Williams, Trinetta McLinton.
Good evening. I am Marcy Hickman, and who wants to take their mask off after hearing all those truths about what these things do? I didn't plan to speak about masks tonight, but I completely agree with everything that is being said, and I'm currently having to keep one child home because of the mask. I can't send him because he has a health condition, and he can't wear a mask. And my other child has acne from the mask. But the reason brought me here today is, first of all, that I do have kids in the Seminole County School, and because they've been online, I have gotten to sit in the class. And I am amazed at what my students, teachers have done. So I want to thank you and thank them for the remarkable job that they have done in this unwanted and difficult situation that we are currently in with COVID. But I am here today with the others to talk to you about the superintendent decision. A lot of things have been said about why you guys went ahead and rescinded your decision, and the ones that I've heard are things like the decision was changed because of the looks of one person, or one person had already resigned from their job, so then they felt pressure to hire this person. And then the last school board meeting was read an old audit history publicly from one of the candidates, who then spoke out and said that that audit was taken out of context, and it could have been done on purpose so that it would look good that you chose the other candidate. So after hearing all these things, how can we, or I, as a Seminole County parent, respect the candidate you choose? So I feel that there is more at stake for the Seminole County schools than ever before, so I'm asking you to take this decision very seriously and please consider starting over with a third party, as many here have asked tonight. Thank you.
Velma Williams, Trinetta McLinton, Rebecca Ritchie, and then Barbara Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm representing the concerned citizens of Seminole County, Afro-American community. First, the Honorable Chairman, the Honorable Board Members, Honorable Dr. Griffin, Attorney Honorable Attorney. Thank you for allowing me to share my last comments, hopefully. First, I would like to express our profound gratitude for your exemplary leadership over the years. And I want to thank you in advance for continuing that exemplary leadership by approving Mrs. Beeman's contract as the next qualified superintendent for Seminole County Schools System. I'd like to remind you that 99.5% of research reveals that teaching experience is not among the top three qualities needed to be an effective superintendent. You can Google it, and it comes right up. Lastly, I want to say that we agree with you, the school board, about the superintendent. Each of you gave him the highest score that could be given. Standard one, vision, culture, and instructional leadership. Standard two, operation, resource, and personnel management. Number three, board governance and policy. Number four, communication and community relations. And number five, ethical leadership. Now, we agree with you, so we would like to ask that you embrace Mr. Griffin's support for Mrs. Beeman. He has stated that he has been grooming her over the years, so we just ask if you would respect that. And I would like to say to the superintendent, we in the community applaud you for the great job, exemplary job that you have done. And I want you to remember something that my grandmother instilled in me. She died at 98, and she reared me. She instilled in me that your reputation is what people say it is. Your character is what it is. You are a great man. So I would like to say, yes, we need to move on. And I would like to say thank you for the opportunity, and let's just do the right thing. Thank you.
Trinetta McLinton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As I sit here, I hear many of you speak of listening to the people. If my memory serves me correctly, the people spoke in mass numbers at the last school board meeting. I think that because it was the few of you who personally did not get what you want, it's a big issue. Someone came up and spoke about this, that it has never happened before, and you're right. It has been the same since probably the beginning of time of the district. Sarita Beeman challenges what has always been, and now it's a problem. Sarita Beeman is qualified according to what has always been, the qualifications of the superintendent. But now, it's a problem. You cannot backtrack because you didn't get what you want as a status quo superintendent. If the qualifications were good enough then, they are good enough now. Then we speak about being an educator. I ask you, what is an educator? We are all educators, if you think about it. Does being in a classroom make you qualified to be a superintendent? Because if that is the qualification, then classroom teachers, substitutes, and anyone who sits in a classroom for at least a day or two is qualified to be a superintendent according to you. But we know that that is not the truth. As an educator, a certified educator, who has been in the classroom for at least 20 years, I know that that is not the truth. Many of you also want to stand here and act as if this, at this point, is not about race. Who are you fooling? You should be ashamed in 2021. We wouldn't be here if it was a white male, status quo, chosen with the same qualifications that Sarita Beeman possesses. We would not be here today. So let's stop dressing a dirty pig and face the facts. It's called a spade a spade. It's 2021, not 1912. Move forward, Seminole County. Do what we teach our students to do, and continue to assert and appoint Sarita Beeman as superintendent of Seminole County Schools.
Rebecca Ritchie, and last call for Barbara Martin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am a longtime teacher. I don't look like Sarita Beeman, do I? But I believe that in this day and age, we need courage to look at the conditions of the division that people are pretending is not here. And I'm so sad that we have to say that. I'm a longtime teacher, almost 50 years. I have been with children and families that don't look like me. I've been very ignorant over the years at times. I've said things that I've heard today, but I've been trying to learn. I've been trying to say, we have to work together to change the disparities that we see in the data in Seminole County and in the rest of the country. And I believe that Sarita Beeman is the person that could help us do that if we will allow her, and if we will say, let's go get to know people at the front porch. Let's go get to know people at all the parts of Seminole County. You can't tell me that we've done enough to communicate with each other. You do have a hard choice. But I believe children in this county need you to make a different decision, need you. And I just implore and beg that you will not be fragile, that you will not be bullied, and that you will not worry about losing your vote and having the pressure of folks that don't want to see a change. Thank you.
Barbara Martin. Okay, Ms. Muramish, you have comments?
Madam Chair of School Board and Superintendent, I received, I've lost count, I think it's 19 public comments. The first comment, and I'm going to use the timer, because I can't see it, it's out of my peripheral view, let me know if I've run over the three minutes. I will do my level best to get it all in. The first comment comes from Shayla McNeil. "The past year has been a rough time for all families at work, home, and school. Our seniors have worked extremely hard to get to this point in their lives. It took concentration, commitment, and dedication to continue to strive for greatness throughout the pandemic. Dr. Hanshaw stated in an email that he started with this graduating class in the fall of 2017. For the past four years, he and our seniors have grown and matured with each other. I feel that splitting the senior class into two separate graduations is the same thing as breaking a family into two. I feel that Dr. Hanshaw did not consider how his students felt about splitting their family, which technically is his family as well. When you're a part of a family, company, or an organization, you should make the decision that's best for everyone. I think that a survey with his extended family would have sufficed. Let the majority speak for itself. If money was a contributing factor to not having their graduations take place at UCF, Dr. Hanshaw could have thought of other alternatives. This was time to get everyone involved, not including Crooms. There are nine other high schools in Seminole County. Did we do any research to see how many students, faculty, staff, and family members could fit inside their football fields or auditoriums before automatically deciding on having their graduation at Crooms, which only has one set of bleachers? What happens if we change the venue and their graduation ceremony is held at a more significant location? Will their class graduate together? Will they be allowed to invite more than six family members? We should have taken these questions into consideration before making a final decision. However, I feel that Dr. Hanshaw has made his final decision and will not change it. I thank you for listening and considering our concerns." Shayla McNeil. Shayla McNeil. The next comment comes from Rabbi Kaprow from Winter Springs. Dr. Griffin, members of the school board, I'm a 40-plus-year resident of Seminole County and have had both of my children graduate from Seminole County Public Schools. It was 1990 when our county voters very wisely changed from an elected superintendent to an appointed superintendent. Part of the reason was because we, the voters and taxpayers in this wonderful county, wanted to ensure that our schools would be led by someone with more qualifications than living in the county and not having a criminal record. We wanted our superintendent to be a first-class educator, someone with a theoretical knowledge of education, as well as having had practical experience as an educator, both in the classroom and as a dedicated leader in our school system. The current Board of Education understood this when they set forth the eligibility requirements at the start of the superintendent search process. Those eligibility requirements were a master's degree or equivalent from an accredited institution with a doctorate preferred, minimum of 10 years of executive administrative and supervisory experience in a school district with at least 25,000 students, or in a comparatively sized government business organization, and three, a background check as mandated by Florida statutes 1012.315. I am certain a master's degree or doctorate was to be in a field related in education, not in archaeology or engineering or other non-education-related areas. That is not meant to be disparaging people with those degrees. It's just meant that they are not ideal candidates to lead a school district, certainly not an A-rated school district. I do not intend to demean Ms. Sarita Beaman. I do intend to state that, in my opinion, as an educator, she lacks the essential qualifications to lead our school district. She may be a fine lawyer and a nice person, but she is not an educator. Yes, she was a part of the leadership team, but was her expertise, but her expertise was with the law, not in educational policy. Seminole County Schools deserve a strongest possible educator available to guide our children's educational experience even higher than they are now. Therefore, I am strongly urging the members of the board to refrain from electing Sarita Beaman into the superintendency and instead reopen the search to find a qualified educator to lead our schools into the future. Thank you for your kind attention. My request to address the board is attached. The next speaker is J.P. Panero. Sorry if I mispronounced your last name, from Sanford. My name is J.P. and I'm the father of two Seminole County School aged children. I write to you today regarding mask mandates for schoolchildren. The sole purpose for this response to the pandemic one year ago was to flatten the curve. The one and only goal was to flatten the curve as to not overwhelm our health care system. In an area under the curve was meant, was never meant to be changed, but the purpose was to spread out more over time to not overwhelm hospitals. The curve was flattened. We did not, and currently are not, even close to overwhelming our health care system here in Seminole County and the state of Florida due to COVID cases. Per the CDC, the COVID fatality rate in kids aged 0 to 20 years old is .003%. The annual chance of fatality for children 0 to 10 years of age in the U.S. is .006 and .04 for 11 to 20-year-olds. School-aged children have between two and three times the odds of fatality from anything else besides COVID. Yet we sit here, one year into the two weeks to flatten the curve, still making our children for six-plus hours a day wear a mask. There have been zero scientific studies done on masking young children for six hours a day, five days a week, for months and months on end, none. The decision to keep our children masked while the school is not based on science, but just how, but just to show that we are doing something to slow the spread, though not effective. There are many studies, however, that show masks do not even work to stop viral infections. We don't know the potential long-term health effects this policy will have on our children, psychologically, mentally, and physically. If you sit and watch an adult for five minutes in a public setting, you'll lose track of the number of times they've touched and adjusted their mask. The mishandling and improper use of masks is actually causing more harm than good and creating a Petri dish of bacteria that those individuals are being forced to rebreathe. If adults can't seem to properly handle masks, then how can we expect a six-year-old to do so? Per the CDC and the World Health Organization, here's how to properly wear a mask. Putting on a mask. Before touching the mask, clean your hands with soap or an alcohol-based hand rub. Inspect mask for tears and holes. Don't wear a mask that's damaged. Put on mask loops behind the ears. Do not cross the straps because this causes a gap in the sides of the mask. Remember, do not touch the front of the mask while using it to avoid contamination. If you accidentally touch it, clean your hands immediately. How to take off a mask. Before touching mask, clean your hands. Remove the straps from behind your ears without touching front of mask. As you remove the mask, lean forward and pull mask away from your face. Handle only by the ear loops and fold it in half. Discard any medical masks that you, that are meant for single use only. Don't touch your eyes, nose, mouth when removing and wash your hands immediately after removing. Replace mask if it gets soiled or damp. Always wash your hands after handling and touching a used mask. I guarantee nearly every single person in this room has not followed the proper mask handling protocols during this meeting alone. Please visit any school and just watch how masks are handled by adults and children. Nobody is wearing it and handling it properly. Thus, they are placing themselves at a greater risk of bacterial and viral infections. Thank you.
Give me a moment here, Jill, please. I want to remind some of you that have taken your mask down, that you can either please put it back on, we do have a policy, or you can go to the third floor and watch the meeting from there. So please, correct your mask.
That would be the second floor, room three, training room three, second floor, yes. And if that's the case, we need to have somebody escort you up there. So raise your hand and we'll make that happen.
Thank you very much.
The next comment comes from Lauren Phelps from Longwood. And she writes, I would like to comment on the discussions that took place recently on the potential appointment of Sarita Beaman in the recent SCPS board meetings. One point that was brought up in Ms. Beaman's favor is that she never lost a case as an attorney. I'm not sure, but as you settle a case, is that still considered a win? I also don't believe that is a positive quality regarding Ms. Beaman representing the county as a superintendent. If she never lost a case as the county's attorney, that wouldn't mean that Ms. Beaman has fought for the county's position and unfavorable for the parents and students of Seminole County. It is the same as human resources. Human resources works for the county as an institution and what is best to protect that institution, not for the employees. I also do not understand the scope of the nationwide search for the next superintendent. One candidate was two counties away and the other one was upstairs in the same building. It seems like a tremendous waste of resources and monies on behalf of the county. In conclusion, I'm not sure what is worse, the county board members not knowing their own bylaws and rules set up they are supposed to follow or thinking they could change them, and no one taking notice of them changing the rules to fit their narrative. Thank you. The next comment comes from Cynthia Hayes from Longwood. No district or school board, school or teachers are perfect, but the seemingly disarrayed process in choosing our superintendent is beyond disappointing. I appreciate that each of you worked extremely hard and I do not question your love for the community. However, I find it alarming that in a nationally-ranked school district such as a, such a process would follow such an uncertain path without a national consideration, that in an aid district, any concerns for conflict of interest were not addressed, that there seems to be uncertainty among the board about what qualifications or requirements took priority in the search, that there seems to be anxiety within the board about a supermajority vote. Yet the original vote, the rescind, the rescindment, nor the second vote had a supermajority, as well as it is concerning that there was not a matter of discussion or forethought within the board before any vote of this magnitude took place. I am deeply saddened that maybe this board does not see this decision and the process as significant as the citizens see it. This process and decision should have been treated with heightened sensitivity and forethought, and that does not seem to have been the case. I trusted the Seminole School Board to thoroughly chart the path properly, ethically, and leave no question unanswered. Yet there are many unanswered questions, as well as heartbreaking consequences to the path down which you have chosen to lead the Seminole County School District. I am saddened that Mr. Farnsworth and Ms. Beaman have been introduced to the community in this manner and that they have to endure such turmoil. Heartbreaking as well that no matter how the vote came out on March 1st, 2021, the Seminole County Superintendent and the Seminole County School Board will have a proverbial asterisk after their titles because this messy process and your blurred and indecisive action have created unmeasured lack of confidence in either. I appreciate Ms. Member Pennick's open letter on the subject. It shows that she can stand up and address the heart issues, even when it is unpopular and uncomfortable, even if it means showing her faults. The school board has obvious hurdles and challenges ahead, as you seem fractured and uncertain among yourselves and within your community. You will continue to hear our public voices as our trust in the school board has been fractured as well. Thank you, Cynthia Hayes. The next comment comes from Dr. Jeff Siskin of Lake Mary. I would like to offer my remarks, which appeared in today's Orlando Sentinel as my board comment. No doubt you will ultimately determine the future path of the district takes. The Seminole County School Superintendent selection process has generated much controversy. An assortment of negative objectives have been used to describe the process: botched, flawed, shameful, and the like. Some believe district officials had some, someone they wanted already picked out. The process leaves me both disillusioned and somewhat troubled. I find many aspects of the selection process to be inconsistent, if not contradictory. For example, there was a national search, yet all five finalists were local. They are employed by the school district of either Orange, Seminole, or Lake County. Several school board members spoke of looking at their choice through the lens of the district survey. The stakeholders' findings indicate a clear preference, educator first, administrator second. Yet in the end, this did not appear to matter. The eligibility requirements include the minimum of 10 years of executive administrative or supervisory experience, but many are skeptic that both individuals interviewed adequately met that qualification. Both interviewed finalists were described as excellent and having very aligned responses, yet changes, changing the final selection was considered essential. Many observers thought the school board members who changed her vote spoke more effusively of the individual who was ultimately not her pick. The school board member who called for a reconsideration of the vote asserted their choice should be unanimous, or at least by a supermajority. Nevertheless, the determination was made by a simple 3-2 vote reversal. What do Seminole County educators say? By and large, they are embarrassed by the process. Although some applaud the outcome, most appear to lack any enthusiasm and are certainly not energized. Many don't believe they will have a superintendent who understands what it's like to be in the classroom shoes. The district office is simply another layer of bureaucracy which, with which it to contend. There's also the sense that the process is not quite over. There are proposals and possible lawsuits still lingering. This district's focus needs to be on moving forward, and certainly its students. Unfortunately, attention has been diverted from student learning to doubts about district leadership. The process has left a bitter taste in many, and either of the two finalists would have started the position under a cloud. No matter what is desired, the cloud is not going to disappear anytime soon. Although the school board members and district officials are more complimentary of the newly-selected superintendent, many still ask if, if what has transpired is the best Seminole County can do. And the most qualified professionals willing to be superintendent of Seminole County Schools, an A-rated school district, its own executive director of legal services, a school board attorney who managed a department of five staff members. In January, I suggested the school board re-advertise the position. Albeit more complicated now, I still advance that position. The district presents, present, the district's present path might afford stability, but taking another look offers the district a greater possibility of fresh prospects, decreased community polarization, and increased student, and increased student rather than leadership focused on success. The next comment comes from Mark Kaprow of Oviedo. To the Honorable Members of the School Board, I am submitting this communication on behalf of myself and my children to address the recent selection of Seminole County School Superintendent. I, as many of the residents in Seminole County, am very disturbed by the behavior of the board over the past few months. The comments made by board members and community members surrounding race as a job qualification are both divisive and derogatory. More so, the unprofessional character attacks on persons from this board are shameful. Your constituency expects you to bring in the best qualified candidates you can find into this position. To fill this position, you have selected an attorney with no formal training or experience in the classroom or in an educational leadership. You have selected someone who, for over a decade, has sought to create contracts that favor the board over the teachers and who sought to limit, by any legal means allowable, the services to our most challenged youth. You have selected someone out of personal preference, as expressed by an outgoing superintendent, rather than by objective qualification. While you may feel she is the best candidate of the two you interviewed, your search was less than extensive, and our children deserve better. I do not want Ms. Beaman to be the person who decides how professional educators will carry out your vision into practice, because she has no experience in transforming vision into educational policy. Even the Director of Operations, who will be, who will be reporting to Ms. Beaman, will have a specialized master's degree in the field. Ms. Beaman will therefore be forced to make her decision not only based on the expertise of others, but without knowledge of, of experience to reliably, reliably gauge those decisions. I do not want Mr. Farnsworth to be superintendent. Your treatment of him was abysmal. Ultimately, your actions have divided our community and degraded our faith in you as leaders with our children's best interest at heart. I implore you to delay this, reopen the search as a regional or national, rather than a local search, and find a candidate that the board and the community can unite behind. Thank you for your time and consideration, Mark Kaprow. The next comment comes from Leija Lee from Longwood. Here we are again, almost a year in, and our kids are still being muzzled unnecessarily. Even though I am homes, even though I homeschool my children, I am still a concerned parent for those children in our Seminole County Schools. I encourage all of you, if you have not, to watch our Governor DeSantis at a roundtable meeting he just had last Thursday morning. So many important things were discussed. One of them was masking our children. Some of those experts were as follows. Dr. Scott Atlas, Professor Suntra Gupta, and Dr. Jay, I'm not going to do that one, Justice, and Dr. Martin Koldroff. These are people who have studied the evidence and have looked into the facts. Just a couple of things said at the roundtable that I hope sinks in for each one of you listening. Listen carefully to the words that they used to describe masking our children. Some quotes from Scott Atlas. There is no evidence that mask mandates have stopped the spread. There is no scientific rational or logic behind having kids wear masks in school. Our country has sacrificed our children of fear. It is an epic tragedy. Some quotes from Professor Gupta. Mask-wearing has a negative impact. In terms of masking children, it is psychologically damaging. Some quotes from Dr. Bachara. How do you teach a child to read without a face mask? Children develop by watching other people. It is developmentally inappropriate. It does not help on disease, it does not help on disease spread. Masks have been harmful and mandates have created social division. Some quotes from Dr. Martin Koldroff. Children don't need to be in face masks. They don't need to, they don't need it for their own protection or for the protection of others. Do you, do you listen to the words from those experts? I know very well that I am not the only parent that feels that masking our children, our kids, is dangerous. We are creating so much harm against them. We are dehumanizing the children of Seminole County. Our children need to see our facial expressions. The definition of dehumanize is as follows: to deprive someone of human qualities, personality, dignity; to remove or reduce human involvement or interaction in something such as the process or place to subject someone as, such as a prisoner, to inhumane or degrading conditions or treatment. We are depriving our children of normal interaction and depriving them of their God-given oxygen. For what? In the name of health? Enough is enough. Parents, rise up. Don't allow this new normal for our children. Kids are at a low, are at low risk for catching the sickness and they are not significant spreaders. School board members not sure you, who your higher-ups are, but if you are only listening to them and not truly listening to the parents, you are doing our Seminole County School children a huge disservice. You are not doctors. Give the parents the option to unmask their own children. Do the right thing. Go against the grain. And for the love of Seminole County, get the gates cut at our baseball field so parents can sit on the bleachers and watch their kids play ball. Did not know that's how that was going to end.
That's it?
No. I have about nine more. The next comment comes from Catherine Maluda. As a Seminole County student, I strongly oppose the board moving forward with the decision of the superintendent at this time. I agree with the statements made by Amy Pennick and believe the selection should move to outside support in the efforts to make the superintendent selection. Thank you, Catherine Maluda. Next comments come from Mario Vargas of Winter Springs. I had taken the time to review the contract that is being proposed for Ms. Sarita Beaman and noticed that some of the issues that many have spoken about with teachers are being ignored. Ms. Beaman wants to listen to teachers. I suggest, beginning with the following. One, teachers are never guaranteed employment beyond one year. I understand that superintendents need to have multiple years for a contract. However, under current contract proposed, Ms. Beaman essentially gets a permanent contract with automatic renewals. Under Florida law, teachers can never be afforded that luxury. What is, why is that the norm? Can we look at alternatives? Two, the expenses are understandable in her contract, but some seem to be very extreme. Hundreds of teachers are working from home right now and not being paid for their personal internet or electricity usage, now being used for work. Under federal law, we Under federal law, we no longer can expense home offices. As a reminder, teachers can only claim up to $250 a year on taxes for costs they are not reimbursed for. While Florida Virtual School provides $120 every month for remuneration of those expenses, Seminole County Virtual does not. Additionally, this is a school in Seminole County public schools. Three, the raises and bonuses far exceed what a teacher will ever get. Please limit the raises for the superintendent, and all district personnel for that matter, to the max amount a teacher gets as a highly effective mark. Even with the most recent raises, teachers in central Florida are having a hard time finding an affordable one- or two-bedroom apartment without having to share it. After finding out what Dr. Griffin has over $250,000 in compensation, and frankly, I was appalled. Many of us have either considered quitting or heading to other states that limit total classes to five per day, or leaving education altogether. We are in it for the kids. However, the teachers and ESPs all alike should not live in poverty to educate the children in our community. It seems that the trend is that superintendents get a lot of benefits, but it comes across as unfair to most teachers and ESP. Please consider amending this contract to make it fair in terms of the market and is equitable in respect to the teachers and staff. Thank you, Mario Vargas." The next comment comes from Monte Crier of Longwood. "We are truly dismayed by the recent actions involving the school board process to hire a new superintendent. The process can be described as nothing short of a three-ring circus. It has been an embarrassment for the county. To offer the contract to a professionally qualified candidate with educational experience, only to later rescind it is disturbing. But then to immediately turn around and offer the contract to a lawyer with no educational experience is totally illogical. We believe the school board owes the citizens of Seminole County a reasonable explanation for this action. It appears you are putting the educational welfare of Seminole County students in jeopardy for some unknown reason. To try to understand your logic, we have searched to find law firms that are headed by educational professionals, and we could not find any. There must be some reason for that. Therefore, the same logic leads us to believe that a lawyer should not oversee a large school district. Unless you can determine that the legal profession feels confident in turning their law firms into educational professionals, you should not turn our school district over to the legal professionals. You must call and enter this process and start over. The school board should hire a competent, objective third party who can do a search for qualified candidates and select one based upon the merit and not on unexplained illogical reason. Monte and Beverly Crier." The next comment comes from Sarah Riley from Oviedo. "I understand that some people would like to completely start the superintendent search over. As a community member, parent of a SCPS student, and employee of the district, I strongly believe that starting the entire process over at this point would be more detrimental to the district and further divide us. The superintendent search looked at all candidates and recommended five to the board. The board chose to interview two candidates. No one has brought up concerns of the process up until this point. There is only one of the two candidates who were interviewed by the board remaining, and she has been selected as our next superintendent. This process needs to come to a conclusion so that we, as a district, can come together and move forward. To drag this process out more would cause more division within our community. Ms. Beaman has by far the stronger candidate, and she will be a wonderfully successful superintendent. You will never have someone that will work as hard as she will for us, as shown by her history with the district. We all want an outcome that would be best for our children, and Ms. Beaman has her own children in our district and wants the same thing for her children as for all of ours." Thank you, Sarah Riley. The next comment comes from Kari Jones of Longwood. "There have been many comments and conversations that have taken place, asking the school board to slow down the process or take a step back after the issues that have stemmed from the meeting on February 23, as it seems as though now there's a push to shove this candidate through, even the amount of backlash there has been. As our elected school board members, it is your duty to listen and have these conversations with the parents of Seminole County. Ms. Allman, Ms. Kraus, and Dr. Calderon, not a single one of you reached out to me or any others that wrote emails to try to have a constructive conversation about our thoughts and our concerns about the situation, or even give your thoughts on why this candidate was so important to you. Why not? You missed an opportunity to give a different perspective that we, as the public, may not see. You each replied with the same generic email sent to everyone. I'm sorry if you're busy, but when you ran for school board, you had to have known that you would need to interact with parents, not just a select group of people. We all vote on your seats. You are not fulfilling your duty to the school board, or quite frankly, yourselves, by not opening up a line of communication when parents are reaching out to you. There should be no rush in the process, as Dr. Calderon had clearly made apparent when she caused the lack of trust a lot of us now feel. Dr. Calderon stated she wanted a supermajority. Then why not take the time to have the conversation about having a third party come in and restart the search? There clearly was not a supermajority for the candidate, so how is it okay now? In addition, if Ms. Beaman does not, in fact, hold mental health in such high regard, I would like to know if she took any precautions or gave any guidance to help all students, parents, and teachers when she had to interact with them in a professional manner, or when she decided to join the FDOE in fighting against students who opted out of testing and were not promoted to the fourth grade even the SCPS had allowed in the past. This doesn't sound like someone who is a champion for all students to hold mental health in such a high standard. I would like to thank Amy Pennick and Abby Sanchez for supporting the initial superintendent based off the parents and teacher surveys that went out. You have kept your word and shown you care for the teachers and parents by listening to their voices and having conversations that are not always easy to have. I'm incredibly impressed by the amount of time that has been dedicated to listening and talking to others while still trying to maintain any sort of my personal life. My appreciation for both of you runs deep. Thank you." The next comment comes from Brian Hill from Oviedo. "Honorable members of the school board, I am writing to express my displeasure regarding the recent selection process of SCPS new superintendent. Our elected school board members have a duty to work in good faith and make decisions that have our students' best interest at heart. After watching the past several weeks play out, I do not believe the board has carried out its search in good faith. The board chose to interview only two of the five recommended by the search committee. Neither candidate possessed all of the desired qualifications. Were the other three not worthy of a conversation? Less than 30 applicants were received for this position. Even given the complications of COVID-19, these numbers do not give me, as a parent in the district, confidence that you have exhaustively searched for the best candidate for the position. The recension of your vote on the next superintendent gave me great concern. While I applaud each of you for your willingness to hear public comment, your decision to rescind your vote based on the need for further discussion of the candidate's merits was an admission that you hadn't taken your responsibility seriously. The final meeting where Ms. Beaman was selected was even more of a fiasco. After listening to public comment for hours, you voted, divided amongst yourselves, even in the face of calls from Dr. Calderon to come to a consensus to conclude the process. You did not engage in substantive discussion or debate, which was the very reason you claimed to have rescinded your vote. You didn't align in support of either candidate. Now one candidate has indicated that he is no longer interested in the position, and you've selected a candidate who lacks educational leadership training and experience. I feel it's already too late, but I urge you to take a breath, take a step back, and keep looking. I learned something valuable during my experience managing a large team. When a hiring committee can't agree on a candidate to hire, which was very clear from the last few board meetings, it's time to keep looking. With no disrespect to either candidate, you haven't found the right one for SCPS yet. Reopen the search process, expand your interview pool, and do the hard work of searching for the right candidate. Specifically encourage candidates from underrepresented groups to apply and find a candidate that you can agree is qualified to lead the district. Give us the consensus and support of our candidate that our students and teachers deserve. Respectfully, Brian Hill." The next comment comes from Jessica Tillman from Longwood. "My name is Jessica Tillman, and as a former employee, I felt ignored. It is disgusting that you require the kitchen staff to wear a mask all day. Masks should be a choice for all employees and students. Kitchens are hot. We stand in front of ovens. Prepping food and setting up meal distribution is physical labor, carrying trays of juice, food, fruits, crates of milk, unloading trucks, and more. I had minimal breaks and felt judged when I took off my mask to take a drink of water. Your mask mandate doesn't even come close to the CDC guidelines. I loved my job, but in a kitchen, the mask made communication much more difficult. It is allowed to start with muscle volume, enunciation, and visual cues with other employees. A 60-year-old man mopping the floor near no one should have the choice to not wear a mask. I challenge all board members to go to work one day in a kitchen with a mask on and tell the kitchen staff that they still have to wear a mask while you have a mask choice in your meetings. Here's a sample day. I walk in the door, self-temped, on the same temp gum everyone has used. Who knows who cleans it and how often? Use the same pen to check off. I set up breakfast alone in a mask for 30 to 40 minutes, moving carts, trays of juice, crates of milk, bins of ice, setting up registers, moving as quick as food service managers would. Through the meal service, I watch kids, most horribly covering their face or under their chins, walking in, changing their minds, grabbing sauce out of a bin, opening doors. Then they type their number in the same keypad that every other kid touches. And what does a kid who just bought food do you ask? They grab their mask, pull it down to eat, sitting right next to another kid doing the same. Food endurance contaminating every mask, then use their same dirty hands to cover their faces again. Think about all the cross-contamination that just occurred, and that's just a snippet. I also feel ignored as a parent. My children also should have the ability to learn from visual cues. Masks are a distraction, a communication barrier, and cause illness. You are indoctrinating our children to disregard the fear of other humans. Get in line, don't ask questions, and do what you're told. Make masks optional for students and staff alike. I refuse to consider an all-day mask normal or part of a dress code for a false sense of security. There are many districts who have never mandated masks in Florida, and they are doing just fine. You do not have the right to blanket mandate healthcare choices over student and staff. The superintendent search needs to start from scratch. You have made a mockery of this district by flip-flopping. This candidate pool has been tainted. The number-one characteristic parents and teachers wanted was an educator. While I believe Ms. Beaman is an excellent attorney, she would have the school board and district best interests, not students. I believe the next superintendent needs to be unanimous vote. Like it was stated in the last board meeting. This is our children's future, and I want to put my faith back in Seminole County public schools again. My family moved here for the school district, and I am completely frustrated at this board's decision this year. Because right now, I have no confidence that you have students, employees, or parents' best interest in heart. Do what's best for the students. Thank you." I have one, two, three, four more. The next comment comes from Alexia Brandafino of Longwood. "To whom it may concern, by now you all have heard many comments and concerns from countless parents, teachers, and community members regarding the most current superintendent selection. And I am sure you've noticed the same reoccurring theme I have. We need to start over. I find it appalling that the school board would not even take the time to discuss the options of starting a new search for superintendent, especially based off the disagreement between school board and our community. There should be absolutely no rush and a huge hesitation to push someone through after negative publicity that this has gotten. This process has garnered a large level of distrust in the decision-making process of the board. Mr. Farnsworth clearly and publicly stated that there are flaws in the system, and it's blatantly obvious he's correct. We pride ourselves as a county who gives the best for teachers and students. Why are we stopping now? This isn't what is best for everyone after facts regarding the selection process have come to light. There needs to be a pause for discussion, putting egos and pride aside, and let the public hear this discussion on what really should be done at this point and why. Do the right thing." The next comment comes from Raquel Molina from Altamont Springs. "Good afternoon. My daughter Emily Paz is a student in Winter Springs High School. I, Raquel Molina, am very disappointed with the decision to have Ms. Beaman as SCPS superintendent due to lack of trust. My daughter Emily Paz was humiliated and bullied by two bad apples in Lyman High School, and no administrators and leadership. The district attorney did not protect my child from abuse. How can I trust the district attorney to defend my child and all ESC students in SCPS? If I can't trust district members, leadership, and their attorney with our children, who can we trust? Due to these reasons, Ms. Beaman should not be our future SCPS superintendent. Sorry for being too honest, but I need to continue advocating for my daughter and all ESC students. Thank you, Raquel Molina." The last comments were on my computer. The next comment comes from Haley Elduff, and she writes, "Please find my comments below for tonight's meeting. As the timeline for the replacement of our superintendent advances, please consider inviting a third party to oversee and audit the process of replacing Dr. Griffin to restore the trust in our community. The process has been flawed throughout the recall of the vote until now. Our community is so proud of SCPS. Please take the measures so that we can continue to be proud with an audit." Thank you, Haley Elduff. And the last comments come from Amanda Lahy -- Amanda Hutwoker, sorry. And she writes, "Dr. Griffin and school board members, last week Governor DeSantis held a very informative public health roundtable discussion in Tallahassee with health experts and professors. They touched on students wearing masks in school. One expert said students wearing masks in school is developmentally inappropriate, while another said it's psychologically deeply damaging. And another said that there is no scientific rationale or logic to have masks in schools. Additionally, the World Health Organization and UNICEF recommended that children aged five and under should not be required to wear a mask. The World Health Organization and UNICEF said that the decision for children ages six to 11 to wear masks should be based on the potential impact of wearing masks on learning and psychological development. Lastly, and most importantly, the World Health Organization and UNICEF stated that the use of masks for children of any age with developmental disorders, disabilities, and other specific health conditions should not be mandatory. Instead, mask use should be assessed on a case-by-case basis by the child's parent, educator, and medical provider. Can you imagine the damaging effects of Seminole County Public Schools mandatory mask training program on special-needs students? Your one-size-fits-all mask mandate is driving children with disabilities out of the public school system. You are following the guidance of the wrong experts. You are harming children. Your one-size-fits-all policy needs to stop, do better. Amanda Hutwoker." That concludes my public comment.
Thank you very much. This concludes public input. Mr. Rinaldi, if you could come up, please. Vice Chairman Pennock, you have a clarifying question on 5G.
I just want to make sure that we're clear on this committee. And these are just my questions. If we could either address them in this committee now or in the next meeting. It's not clear if this committee meeting is a Sunshine Committee.
Yes, this is a Sunshine Committee, and we will advertise the probably two meetings that we have.
Is that something that we should put into this write-up?
Okay.
And then, just curious, I guess now that it is a Sunshine Committee, we will have to move to it being a mandatory in-person. I think that it's best if we could describe what quorum is and what somebody should do if they cannot attend. We've seen that in some of our recent committees where people couldn't attend, and they didn't delegate, they didn't submit minutes. And I think that kind of just does a disjustice to the process. So I'd like to further outline what needs to be done if someone can't attend this meeting. And then my last question is, we have citizen representation from all the cities, we have staff representation from SCPS and the county, but we don't have city staff representation.
In the past, in actuality, some of the citizens from the cities have been staff representatives as well. It's been a mix. We've had some PTAC members that also reside within the city that have attended. So we just gave them the general term "citizens" when we listed the committee out.
But if they're a staff member, it could be construed or misconstrued that they're representing the city at which they work for. So maybe we should clarify or describe that it should either be a citizen or a staff member, or either-or. I just don't want us to get into any issues where we've misrepresented citizen participation, not staff participation. And if it's a crossover and a staff member is participating, it's not misconstrued that they are representing the city's wishes in this process.
Well, either if they're a citizen or a staff, we're expecting them to be representative of that city. So they would be coordinating probably with leadership and possibly with staff at the city. But we can clarify, our real desire is to make sure that if they are representing a specific municipality, that they reside within that municipality. That's a critical piece. Okay.
Superintendent, you have a recommendation, please.
My recommendation? Madam Chair, is that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Thank you. Second? Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Board members, would you like to take a five-minute break?
Yes, please.
7:18. We'll come back at 7:25. We're going to do a quick recess. Thank you. Thank you.
I have no additions to the timeline presented to the superintendent search timeline document prior to the December 15, 2020 board meeting, at which time the search committee presented the board with five recommended candidates to move forward. We accepted those five candidates. The search committee was released from sunshine laws and each member began to do our own due diligence. It was at that time during my due diligence that I found out that there had been numerous calls made to members of the search committee by the current superintendent to advocate for one candidate for which I believe tainted the process. I proceeded to review provided documents, search public records, and make public records requests. Through this process, I narrowed my candidate choice to two individuals. At the January 19, 2021 school board meeting, the candidates were narrowed down to two individuals, Mr. Farnsworth and Ms. Beaman. After this meeting, I did do further, further due diligence by requesting feedback from individuals who had not provided letters of recommendation. I received red flags on each candidate. However, one outweighed the other. I vowed to remain open-minded during the interview process. It was also brought up to speed, it was also brought up to speed up the process of the hiring of the candidate, at which time I also expressed my concern of the optics of this. Rather than interviewing February 17 and 18 and final voting on February 23rd, we moved the interview up to one day, February 8th, and the final vote to happen on February 9th. On February 8th, 2021, the candidates were interviewed in group settings, then in one-on-one by each of us. I used my experience and business acumen and leadership and human resources, the information gathered during this process, and how the candidates responded in their interviews to base my decision on how to vote for our next superintendent. On February 9th, 2021, the school board meeting was held, at which time a 3-2 vote, Mr. Farnsworth was selected. Announcements went out. We voted to authorize the chairman to negotiate the employment contract with the newly superintendent, newly selected superintendent. Between February 10th and February 15th, Member Sanchez called me very upset, indicating that the current superintendent had called her and was irate in manner, expressing his anger on her vote. I did not receive such a call. February 23rd, 2021, prior to the school board meeting, I was informed by Dr. Griffin that there was a potential that that night's meeting will look different. Please talk to the board clerk. The board clerk informed me that there was going to be time right before public comment to allow board members to speak, not giving any context as to why. That night at the board meeting prior to public comment, the board opened the dais, was, the board chair opened to the dais for comment. It was at that point that Dr. Calderon made the motion to rescind the vote for superintendent and allow for discussion, which did not happen at that meeting, but at the following meeting. Her concern was that we did not have an in-depth dialogue, nor did we show full support for one candidate with a 5-0 vote. March 1st, school board meeting, we had a generous public comment and an in-depth dialogue between the board members on why we voted the way we did, called for a vote, which resulted in a 3-2 vote for Ms. Beaman. I'm still unclear as to why Dr. Calderon changed her vote or why she did not press for a 5-0 vote at this time, and think that a clarification would help heal this board and community. We did not vote to authorize the school board chairman to negotiate an employment contract with the newly selected superintendent. I questioned this with the board clerk, who researched and was told that because we voted on it previously, we did not need to vote again. I'm still unclear if this is something we should have voted on or not. March 9th, at the point in the school board meeting for which each member gives a committee update, Ms. Kraus requested this in spirit of full disclosure for our CFO to read out-of-context audit comments related to two counties the previous candidate worked for. I would like to better understand, I would like to have a better understanding of why this was brought up, and think that an explanation would also help heal this board and community to provide clarity to those two counties as to why it was necessary. We have all received countless emails from parents and community members expressing their dismay in this process. Our transparency and the end result is setting up the new superintendent for failure before they begin. It is for this reason I would like to make a motion to follow our policy number 8141, mandatory reporting of misconduct, and request a full review of this entire process be made by outside counsel to determine if there was or was not wrongdoing or sunshine violations on any part of any of this organization, including myself.
Do you want feedback, or do you want other comment? Do you want other board members?
I just made a motion, so.
Point of order. We have a motion on the table.
That, that's correct. There's a motion on the table. The new motion is unrelated, related but not an incidental motion to the main motion. So the motion that's on the table should be taken up first.
Okay, thank you. So is there a second?
Well, you can't second Ms. Pennick's motion if there's already a motion on the table. There was a motion and a second, and that was discussion on that motion.
But then Ms.
The motion that's on the table was the initial motion. I'm sorry, I can't remember who did it. Was it Ms.
I motion.
That motion is on the table. It's open for discussion right now. The subsequent motion cannot be taken up until after the main motion has been resolved.
Okay, well, then I would like to recommend that we put a hold on the, this agreement until we can provide clarity of the process of this superintendent search to make sure that when we do hire and enter into contract, that it's done in the best interest of all parties, including the incoming superintendent.
Again, point of order. We have a motion to discuss.
Ms. Pennick, I think you could interpret the motion that you've stated as a motion to table or a motion for an indefinite postponement. Can you clarify?
A motion to table, please.
That, that motion can be taken up prior to addressing the main motion. But it, it's like any other motion, needs a second and a majority vote.
I'm not clear which one we're tabling. The first? Excuse me.
There's, there's only one motion on the floor, one main motion on the floor now, which is the motion to approve the contract of Ms. Beaman. The incidental, the secondary motion by Ms. Pennick is to table the main motion. That needs a second and then a vote in order to.
Is there a second? Board members, is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second.
That's correct.
That's correct. Thank you. Now we go back.
Now you take up the main motion that was on the floor, previously on the floor, to approve the contract of Ms. Beaman.
Now are we at the point of discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board members?
Yes.
Could I speak? Are you going to call?
Member Brown, please. Please.
Okay. Madam Vice Chair, I'm fine if we have an investigation after we approve the contract. I feel like we need to continue moving forward in good faith with Sarita Beaman as our superintendent. And I'm happy to provide my timeline or whatever other data. I've turned over my phone, my email, my text messages. I'm happy to provide anything. I had no, no outside influence, just for your record.
Thank you.
I think we as a board, I agree with a lot of things that Mrs. Pennick said. I agree with things that we collectively as a board say. I think there's a lot of further communication that we have to have openly. I think many of us didn't talk openly because of impending lawsuit that by legal counsel we were told that we weren't commenting. But I, I really think now we have to talk about ramifications of starting a whole new search over, which we heard from community members in emails and phone calls and comments, you know, this evening, that we've already had votes and an opportunity to discuss our decisions. And I try to look through the lens of what's best for the future of our district and our students. I know the community right now is very divided. I mean, even we as a board are divided and, you know, we represent the community and the students. We've already advertised nationwide and we've formed a committee with each of us putting two people on that committee. And I know, Ms. Pennick, you just stated that, you know, after they were without the sunshine, you talked to many committee members, and I did as well. We came to the decision that we had two great candidates that we all chose unanimously to interview, which we did. And by setting aside the decision to reopen a new search, I think that we risk the forward motion of momentum that we already have in this A-rated school district. We risk the stability. Many people, I, I've heard comments of get an interim superintendent, and I know we even had a discussion a decade ago before Dr. Griffin took place. And the input that we got from many employees, community members, that having an interim superintendent leaves a district in flux. And I think we, as a society, and micromanage down to the district, we've had a pivot so much already this year, just with COVID and different other issues that I, much already this year, just with COVID and different other issues, that I, I'm worried about risking the stability of this school district. We could ultimately open up a nationwide search with an outside firm. I know we had discussed it early in the process. I had called some nationwide firms, but there wasn't a majority of this board at that time that wanted to do that. I even, before our final vote, had reached out to FSBA to say, what would something like this look like if we chose to go out again? And, you know, the recommendation was, it's going to take a long time. You know, you're not going to be able to just go out and advertise. You're going to have to wait. And I'm just concerned about our students. As we've said in the past, when we make these votes, I know we always think about the students and how that would affect the students. And because of that reason, I just feel that we need to move forward. As you know, you've all read the contract, if it is approved, there's, it's, it's not for a lifetime, as with anything in our life, right? Anything could happen in a day, but there's 90-day, you know, out clauses on both parties. And I truly believe that we, as a board collectively, when we, you know, narrowed it down to two candidates, that we felt good about interviewing those two candidates. And as a school district, I really feel that we need to move on as a district for the children.
Member Sanchez?
I just wanted to say that on both sides and everything, you know, our students are number one, and our teachers and faculty, as well as all of our employees. And being a teacher, you know, I've always said that I wanted an educator, and everybody knows that. But also, remembering my childhood, my twin sister and I, they told us, told my mom, never to expect us to get out of high school, let alone go to college. My mother didn't tell us that until we graduated college. And she was crying, and I asked her why. They didn't believe in us. They didn't think we could do it. To this point now, I said on the news that I'm optimistic, and I believe that Sarita has, you know, a challenge ahead of her, just like anybody would. And, but I think that when you have a challenge, like I did, and like she does, and everybody else that we have around here, everybody has challenges, and everybody has gifts, and everybody has disabilities. But she's going to push herself even more. She's going to make it, and she's going to prove it to everybody. And that's what I did. It may not, we may not all agree, or we can agree to disagree all day long. And you may feel that I'm wishy-washy, or whatever. I don't care anymore. I'm here for behalf of our students. One concern I have is we've had a lot of parents talk about ESE students, and I want to make sure our ESG students are taken care of, and things are not brushed under the rug, and that we do what we need to do to make sure all of our students get what they need. Now, I know there were comments before about masks. Now, I said this at the beginning when we started wearing masks, and I said, back in the summer, and I did it on TV, if you can pull your mask down, you're six feet away. Is that okay if a teacher talks like that? And I was told yes. So I'm not sure why that's not happening. I know we ordered masks that people could see through, so they can see the articulation of lips, mouths, and so on and so forth. I think that's extremely important, especially in classes of language, speech development, or anything else that they need to see the mouth. But if the teacher's in front of the room, by all means, they should be taking their masks down. And I'm not sure where this miscommunication is coming from, but if schools are not doing it, we need to know. We just need to heal. We have such division in this county right now, and it's so thick, and there's so much going on in this world. People dying of COVID, family members of mine dying from COVID, and other issues. Put life in perspective, guys. Let's pull it together and be a community that we are. Seminole County is ranked number one for so many reasons, and because of our schools, and because of our fabulous employees and teachers. And everybody does what they need to do, all of us. I love every single one of them. I may not agree with them all the time, but I can't begin to tell you, I love them to pieces. Dr. Griffin, we may have had some words, but I forgave him, and I love him to pieces, and I respect him more than you would ever know. Thank you.
I agree with many of the comments that you all made, and I, I too am willing to share information and timeline. I'm not prepared to do that tonight. I didn't expect to do that tonight. I know we all went at this process with the best intention. We had absolutely no interest in doing things wrong or making a wrong decision. We're all human. We work really, really hard, and, you know, even if we don't agree, and that's okay if we don't agree. And, and it's okay if you're angry, it's okay if you're passionate about your beliefs, but I can see you as a person as well as I can, you know, separate the issue. I find that I don't give a cookie-cutter answer, but I give a minimal answer, because I don't want my words mistaken or misrepresented. It's a whole lot easier to have a conversation with someone than it is to do an email with them. Frankly, I stayed off Facebook. I, I heard that was quite toxic, so I don't typically do business on social media, and it's a pretty good policy to have. We're doing the best, we're making our decisions as we move along in what we think is the best interest for our students, teachers, and county, and citizens. I appreciate all of you. Are we ready to go for a vote, or are there final comments? Ready for a vote?
Ms. Clerk, would you please do roll call vote?
Member Kraus?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pennick?
No.
Member Calderon?
Yes.
Chairman Almond?
Yes.
Motion passes for one.
Thank you. We're at the portion of board committee update.
Okay, I believe I'm first, is that correct?
You are. Member Sanchez?
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill 86, as you know, Bright Futures Bill. Thank goodness, our students will be able to get their bright futures still. There are a lot of bills out there, and I need you all to write to your legislators. I need you to talk to them as much as possible, please, I'm begging you. There are committee meetings daily that a lot of us have been attending. We receive emails saying, you know, you all need to get on board. We are on board, believe me. We know what's going on, and we are voicing our opinions with the representatives in Zoom calls, doing whatever we can to make sure that our students get what they need. For example, with the Springwide Assessment, FSA, you know what? We've been told numerous times that not to worry, it's going to be okay, our kids aren't going to have to be using it for data, the teachers, so on and so forth, won't have the score for VAM, and so on and so forth. Well, that was told to me by the Commissioner and our Chancellor of Education, and I'm tired of them playing games. Our teachers are stressed, they're ready to quit. Our employees are ready to quit. Our families are worn out. We see a huge gap, and I need you all, please, 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 let's put life in perspective. Let's take this right now and make sure that our students have, this test is fine for data purposes. Personally, I don't think the test is fine, but use it for data only, and then we can go from there and see where our gaps are for our children, do another year of it. If we could do it for a couple months last year, why wouldn't we do it for a whole year this year? So please check out all of those. I'll let her talk about the, we had Seminole Foundation's golf tournament yesterday. Thank you so much for all the business partners and all the citizens that came out to support our education. And Jean, thank you, everybody, for everything that they've done to help that. I know that Dr. Griffin will be having a mask mandate discussion, or he'll probably go ahead on Friday when you're talking to the experts, most likely.
Our medical advisory board is on the agenda for Friday.
Perfect, so it's on the agenda for Friday, so we can get an update with the health experts to see where we go with the masks. Dr. Seuss birthday party for Early Learning Center, Bring Your Kids. It's March 25, Thursday, 5:15 to 6:15 at the Early Learning Center. That's 1101 Bay Avenue in Sanford, and I'll be there all dressed up as either Thing One or Thing Two, or maybe Dr. Seuss. I haven't decided yet. And Running for Heroes, I just wanted to do a shout-out to Zachariah Cartridge for everything that he's been doing. We had probably about 80 police cars Monday night, or Sunday night, I can't remember now, running for heroes. He ran for the fallen hero, Kevin Valencia, who passed away after two years fighting his battle in a coma from Orlando. And there were probably the largest turnout we've had, along with a crane that lifted a big blue line flag in support. And he was chosen as our Scholastic Student of the Year for the whole nation, for the United States. So that's huge. So a big shout-out to him. And last thing I just wanted to say is, we all need to work together and get through this, and communication is the key, and that will hopefully help heal our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kraus?
Thank you. And Member Sanchez, thank you for your encouragement. I agree, we all need to heal. We need to do what we can to be supportive of each other, to accept that we have differences. But thank you for speaking, speaking for that. I attended the Children's Cabinet last week. The Heart of Florida United Way did a presentation on the benefits of the 211 phone call and the services. Apparently, it's readily available nationwide, and they have services that can prevent Baker Acts and crisis prevention, and just be aware that that's a service available. I'm happy to provide more information if you're interested. Safe Kids announced its Poison Prevention Week, and it's also Heat Awareness Week. They, they offered to come out and do simulations of what happens when you leave a pet, or a baby, or a kid in a car. So just be cognizant, be aware. We want to prevent any injuries that we can. I'm going to let Chairman Almond talk about Castleberry Elementary, but we did all get to sign the beam. And thank you to the sponsors for the Golf for Education, for our foundation. Amy, I hope you could give an update. I think it raised lots of money, even though it was glum, gloomy weather, they said it's better to be on a golf course than at work, so thank you all.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pennick?
Our Audit Committee is meeting this Friday. We received six RFPs for the internal auditor position, so we are meeting Friday to shortlist those and then go through the interview process. I understand that the B O C C had further discussion about the ILA today. We will have an update at the next meeting, but not at this meeting. I think we have some more work to do on that. And I have just one more write-up, please bear with me. During these past few months, we've heard from many of our community members, our staff, teachers, and more, what they wanted to see in our next leader. We paid an outside consultant to survey, examine, and provide us input, but through this process, we failed to listen to our community, those that have laid trust in us to execute the biggest task that any school board will ever do, which is hire a new superintendent. Moving past these few months, I'm sure you're aware that after the last board meeting, where it was felt necessary to further degrade the reputation of a candidate no longer in the process, I took my pen to paper and wrote to our community. The result of this letter was an overwhelming response from the community, our parents, but most importantly, our staff and our teachers. What I heard over and over again was that our staff were thankful that we were standing up for them. We heard during public comment at the March 9 meeting from a staff member that, that she had frustration that our organization does not allow for our staff to speak up for fear of retaliation from supervisors or peers. On March 11, I received a love letter from Dan Smith, President of the Seminole Education Association, for which he condemned me for using my voice to express my opinion and apology of the situation at hand. Further, he wrote, and I quote, "I have expressed my outrage that our teachers, especially our annual contract teachers, put up with abuse on themselves and others they work with, because they tell me if they speak up, they fear retaliation. This has been going on for quite some time in Seminole. I have told the school board this endless times as president of SCA and as a teacher. For you to now say that you are concerned that, that teachers and staff are being afraid to speak up is just frankly insulting to any teacher or staff member who works in this district. I am very concerned about this, and I'm going to address it right now." So I do have one more motion for the board. Please, if we could explore seeking an outside firm to come in and help us evaluate, examine, and provide us guidance on how to address and remove, remove this culture of fear. If this has been going on as long as Mr. Smith alludes to, we have an issue that is bigger than our current leadership has been able to get their hands wrapped around, and we need to have assistance. My hopes are that this type of process will allow us to create an environment where our staff are comfortable in using their constitutional voice to raise awareness of concerns, bring forward ideas, or show support for SCPS growth without fear of anything.
Oh, second it.
Okay, we can't understand you with the masks, so. So the motion's on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Discussion.
In my comments, I was going to bring up to bring in a consultant, but it was more under the headlines of open communication and to understand and to move forward and heal. I personally have not had comments on retaliation, but I believe you have. I too have stayed off of social media, but that concerns me, and I'm sure it concerns this body, and I think that's what we do well as a school district, is continuous improvement. And just as when we start our school board meetings back in the day, when we used to use the focus on student achievement, what we actually did in the beginning of that, and I think it was prior to when you joined the board, it was we flipped the data. We didn't look at all the accolades and what was going right, we looked at what was going wrong, and how could we do that? And I think maybe those discussions have kind of morphed. And if there is a culture that, based on what I hear you saying, I think is toxic, I think the only way that we can rise to a higher level is to have those tough conversations, and I would support you in that, just thinking, I don't know what kind of a consultant or person to bring in, and I would hope perhaps, Dr. Griffin, if we could maybe even schedule a work session, that we could all throw in our ideas of things that we want investigated, or standards of communication, or whatever the case may be, but I think those discussions should happen sooner rather than later.
Member Sanchez?
I love that idea. I think that also maybe. I think that also maybe a mental health counselor or someone from our faculty or employees can be there as well to help us get through all of this, too. You know, I can talk to my psychiatrist all day long, but we need to all talk together. Thank you.
Are we ready for the vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, board members. Did you capture the motion? Okay. Thank you. Finished. Vice Chair Pennick? Thank you. Uh, Member Calderon?
I was fortunate enough to attend the student forum over at Crums. And in listening to those students, graduation didn't come up as a negative, and there was a cross-section of students. So I know we don't respond to public comment, but Dr. Griffin, if I could perhaps ask you to follow up with Dr. Henshaw to see if there is another alternative. You know, I think six people to attend to graduation is actually more than we've had in the past in traditional graduations. But we all agree that this has been a difficult year for our students, for our teachers, for our families. And anything that we can do to bring celebration or normalcy to this graduating class, I'd like to do whatever we could do. And knowing that it's not a board decision, it's a principal decision. But if we could support Dr. Henshaw-
I'll be happy to reach out to Dr. Calderon.
Okay. Fortunate to attend the Latinos in Action meeting this year. I know in years past, a lot of us have attended. And this year, I was very impressed with their resiliency. You know, many of the things that they have done in the past is go to Tallahassee to advocate for students. And this year, they weren't able to go to Tallahassee. But they have all reached out, every single high school, and helped people in the community, whether it be going to nursing homes or doing food collections. They were just so creative. And like so many in our community, those who have the least sometimes give the most. And you could see the love of these students. And one of our speakers this evening talked about things we should teach in school, such as empathy or questioning and those kind of things. And that are the skill sets that these students were really learning in their club meetings of communities, Latinos in Action. The leadership skills and their presentation skills to us were very, very impressive. Congratulations to all of our Employees of the Year. We, since our last board meeting, we had our virtual Employee of the Year ceremony that I enjoyed watching. And thank you to Grace Gonzalez and her whole team for putting that event together. And thank you to all of our sponsors at the Crums Tech Fest. We actually got to have our Tech Fest back at Crums live and in person this year. Or students were able to attend virtually if they couldn't attend personally. And some of our guest speakers attended virtually because they didn't feel safe in attending. So congratulations to their Business Advisory Board for all of the funds that they've raised. 100% go to student scholarships. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. In assessment and accountability, kudos to Kelly Thompson for the fine work she did providing data to Ovita High School to give them a very successful accreditation from an outside firm. It's a lot of work. Casbury Elementary, I signed the beam yesterday. And the beam was raised today on their new building. So it's really coming along. It's very impressive. The last meeting where I had added comments earlier, as well as later in the agenda, like we used to do, and I asked you to think about if you'd like to do it that way in the future. Doesn't matter to me. It's easy for Jill. It would be anything comments related to mostly the agenda items would go up, and then the bottom would be any other additional comments or events or anything.
I like that idea.
Okay.
I think it's also a good idea.
Okay, we'll move forward with that. Thank you. And that's it. I have, we've had so many meetings lately. I'm kind of in between. I have things later in the weekend, next week. Dr. Griffin, anything else? No further business. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.